Okay, the next thing is one of the hottest topics in the state is an update on marijuana. And I just want to, and I want to pick an editorial license because I'm president of the council at this point, to start out is that I think the policy, not the policy, but rather the attitude of the city and the council and is that this is a law that was passed by the voters. And we have every expectation that we'll do whatever we can to do with the voter frustrations about medical marijuana. We have, we as a city are going to get stuck with all the problems. We're stuck with the zoning, we're stuck with the location of these things. We're stuck with enforcement. And I really believe it puts our city employees and our police officers in a real bad position when you have state law and you have federal law and they don't agree. The feds most likely should just give up on it because I can see where it's going across the nation. But I think we need to realize that our officers and our code enforcement people and regulating any planning people, everybody, are also controlled by what federal law. I mean, we have to get grants and everything else, we have to comply with the federal law. And this is a real gray area, so it really puts them in what I consider a difficult position. This is the reality, but the feds won't let go. And it makes it hard, especially hard on the police officer, who knows? That's a violation of the federal law, but now it's okay. And the other thing that I have to say on this, and then I'll shut up, is smoking. We don't allow smoking in buildings or any place. And now there's a move to allow marijuana to be smoked in public places. And, you know, so anyway, that's just kind of my editorial comment. So everybody in the room knows where the hell I'm coming from, which I didn't have to tell you because you knew already. But I had a second. Okay. And so I think there's two parts to this. One is the zoning and where we're at. And the other is enforcement and how, what are we doing with the laws? And from that, I have a lot of questions.
Do you want to start with zoning or enforcement?
Whatever you guys get to start, wherever you want to go.
So, thank you, good afternoon, members of council. So, the first thing that you have is your hand up compares Washington and Colorado and the two states in the country that have legalized marijuana. And it very quickly has the Broncos and the Seahawks that are super well-known. This is a little better. And it just gives you a real rough outline of how these two states have elected to go about legalizing recreational marijuana with a few different approaches. Either way, essentially the eyes of the country are on Washington state and how we move through this because it is definitely uncharted territory. And as Councilwoman Person was mentioning, the federal government has sort of taken a step back and said, "Okay, muddle through this and we'll see what happens," sort of thing. And that being said, the Planning Commission has had a really good time with this. And when I say that, I mean that they really appreciated and enjoyed engaging in a topic that is so current and so pressing and has such relevance. They don't all agree by any means, but they have appreciated being sort of at the forefront of something and really gotten very involved in this discussion and have really appreciated the responsibility that you guys have delegated to them as far as moving forward with this. As you know, you adopted a moratorium in November, a six-month moratorium that said, "Okay, this really is happening, recreational marijuana is moving forward, and we really haven't thought about in terms of land use where we would put a recreational retailer." Like, we haven't had that happen before, so what do we call that and where do we allow it to happen in the city of Renton? There's also producers and processors. And then do we want to have different regulations on top of that that might be unique to Renton? And so we've been working through that with our Planning Commission. We had two briefings, sort of slowly with them, just to make sure that we were all on the same page. Our first meeting, we just went over the Liquor Control Board rules. The Liquor Control Board has very strict and guidelines and very specific guidelines for what their rules are. For instance, they have a tracking system that tracks marijuana from the time it's seen all the way to the time that it is sold. And they have very specific requirements for how that occurs. They have very specific requirements for all of them, producers, processors, and retailers, about security. You have to keep video cameras rolling and those tapes have to be kept for three months. They have to be located in certain places, lights, and all kinds of specific pixels about how many pixels the cameras are keeping, just really, really specific requirements. None of that are really things that we have control over, but it's informational to know what rules they're being asked to play by in terms of the producers, processors, and retailers. One of the most germane things that really does influence our decisions, the Liquor Control Board has said that, "Okay, we're allowing recreational marijuana, but we want to protect children from the potential impacts of recreational marijuana and the stores that they'll be being sold that, as well as the producers and processors." So they established thousand-foot buffers from playgrounds, schools, recreation centers, parks, transit centers, libraries, and game arcades. So they tried to think of all the places that anybody under the age of 18 might be hanging out. And they said, "We want to try to protect our kids from those places." On the maps that you have, the first one actually is showing you one of the potential zones that we're talking about allowing it in. But those buffers, those sort of tan or grayish-toned dot or blob on your map are all the places those thousand-foot buffers are coming from. So you can see Kiwanis Park, that has a thousand-foot buffer off of it. So nothing could be located within a thousand feet of that. One of the other Liquor Control Board rules is that marijuana businesses cannot be located in a residence. So a place like Kiwanis Park isn't a residential area, so it sort of really doesn't matter, but it's still a park, and so we just show that on the map. But it does come into play in our downtown very significantly with our transit center and other uses that are down there. So that there potentially could be a place, but that wouldn't be allowed because of these thousand-foot buffers. Preschools and daycares are part of that as well. And daycares are a significant number of these buffers, these thousand-foot buffers. So whenever we look at this, we have to sort of take out those areas. The first recommendation that we have is that we go ahead and allow producers and processors. So producers are the ones that are growing the marijuana, and processors are the folks that are then processing it and turning it into something that could be sold. The Liquor Control Board has really chopped this up and said, "No one body per se can do all of it in one thing." A person could hold some of the same licenses. So actually, one of the things is that a person or an entity can hold both a producer and a processor license. And between that step, there's supposed to be a 25% tax that's charged on that sale from the producer to the processor. But because a person or an entity can hold both of those licenses, most jurisdictions are recognizing that and saying, "You know what? If I were going to be doing that business, I would hold that license" because they don't have to pay a 25% tax when they transfer that between themselves. So there's essentially a 25% tax incentive to hold both of those licenses. And so we're recommending that basically we kind of consider producers and processors in the same light and that we allow them in our industrial heavy zone only. Not apply any other requirements other than we require producers to be located indoors only. So the State Liquor Control Board initially said indoors only, but got some push to try to allow that outdoors. They have some very specific requirements for the way it would be allowed outdoors with eight-foot security fences, additional cameras. The greenhouses that might be on site have to have specific requirements and all of that. We don't really have a way, the only place that we were allowing, we allow agriculture is our RC and R1 zones. And that just doesn't seem like an appropriate fit to have a marijuana producer, a process producer in a place like that in our city. And other than that, it didn't really, it just didn't fit. And it also has some pretty intensive use of water and some concerns about that running off. And so we can control that and make sure that it's not just going off into our groundwater, but it's going off into a different treated system. So we're also recommending that producers be required to be located indoors. So then that's reflected in that industrial heavy zone. The Planning Commission has not made their recommendation. They've had their two briefings and a public hearing. And they'll be doing their deliberations and recommendations next Wednesday. And so we'll know what their recommendation is next week. But so far, as far as the industrial heavy for the producers and processors go, they're seemingly pretty amenable to that at this point in time. So the next map that you have shows sort of the initial staff recommendation for where we might allow marijuana retailers. So this is where folks would go and actually purchase marijuana product. To go back, I'm sorry, with processors also, state law allows not just sort of like weed or pot. It just, it allows things to be refined and processed. And edibles are one of the things that can be sold at the retailers. And so there has to be a way that that, that the pot is changed into that, something that can be put into a food product. And so that's what processors are also going to be doing. And they'll use solvents and all kinds of other things for that. So that's another reason that it really feels like an industrial use. As well as producers noted in many different sources, production can have an odor that drifts off-site. And so our industrial heavy definition sort of accounts for things that might have odors and other issues associated with it. So that's why it's a really good fit there. But as far as retail goes, since we haven't had this as a use before, we didn't, we don't know where to start. A lot of other jurisdictions have said, "Well, marijuana retail, so how about retail?" Well, the city of Renton, we have retail sales. It's a really broad definition that we have for retail sales, and we allow it in 13 zones. Some of those zones include our commercial neighborhood zone, which is a really small, just sort of intentionally in neighborhoods. We also allow some retail sales in our residential multifamily zones and in our R14 zone, which is really a pretty intensive residential zone. So that seemed like that was just entirely too much for marijuana retailers. We're not anticipating that marijuana retailers be small in scale and just sort of a mom-and-pop shop. We are anticipated to have three in the city of Renton. The Liquor Control Board has said, based on the population of the entire state and allocating things out, and they did this with liquor stores. We're allocating a different number of licenses to different jurisdictions based on their populations. Renton, you get three. And so we don't, we may not get as many as three, but we may, we won't have more than three. There were more applications for marijuana retailers in Renton than just three, so I would anticipate that we will get those three somewhere. So we looked at our land uses, retail, didn't really seem like that was enough. Other jurisdictions have like intensive commercial or light commercial or retail sales, and we just have retail sales. So the one that we came up with that at first seems like it's a little crazy, but the more that we've thought about it, actually has a pretty good fit, is similar to taverns. Taverns are also regulated by the Liquor Control Board. The Liquor Control Board has very specific rules and issues licenses for taverns. Taverns also similar to marijuana retailers, only people that are over the age of 21 are allowed to enter the premises. Now, for taverns, people over the age of 21 also stay there and consume the product. They won't be doing that in marijuana retailers. So it's not an exact correlation, but it's at least a start. Marijuana retailer or taverns are also allowed in eight zones. And so that felt a little bit more comfortable, or actually these six zones. And so, and these are more intensive commercial zones for the city of Renton. There are pretty intensive zones in general, other than industrial. So just under the straightforward recommendation, without any additional requirements, would be to allow them in the CA, CB, CD, COR, and our UCN 1 and 2 designation zones. So that, now the Liquor Control Board buffers kind of changed to red on this map. And so you can see, for instance, the center village zone up on Sunset there. Effectively, there's just a small smidgen of that zone where that potentially could happen. The Liquor Control Board buffers with daycares and parks really takes out effectively most of the center village zone. Further down on Sunset, it does allow still some of our CA zone potentially to be a potential location for marijuana retailers to be located. Now, within that, you can see that the landing might be a place where marijuana retailers could be located. Now, we don't know where marijuana retailers will be located because it's ultimately up to the landlord to say, "Sure, go ahead, move on in." And I, you know, potentially they could be at the landing, but it's up to the landing to determine whether or not that's a business that they want, that they tend to. Also, marijuana retail is not allowed to locate, co-located with any other stores. So it can't be, Safeway, for instance, can't say, "Well, we want to, in addition to liquor, we want to start selling marijuana on aisle 10." And so that's not something that we have to consider. They're going to be scandalous businesses. They could be part of a strip mall, but they can't be co-located. So that's the, that's the most straightforward recommendation and things that we've been considering is that we just allow it straightforward, without any additional buffers or regulations in these commercial designations for marijuana retail. The Planning Commission also wanted to look at some other things. What if we sort of tighten things up a little bit and made it more restrictive? They specifically have concerns, so the third map that you have really becomes quite, quite red. And they are concerned first and foremost about residential areas. And so they asked to see a map of what it would look like if we did a 500 and a thousand-foot buffer from our RC, R1, R4, R8, R10, and R14 zones. And so that's what this map represents is, and it's actually just the 500-foot buffer, so you can imagine a thousand-foot buffer would just go beyond that. Effectively, it limits it to the landing and a small portion of Rainier, a very small portion of Brady, and then some in our employment area valley where potential locations for, and this would apply to also the producer-processors as far as Planning Commission would be concerned. So it would also take out some areas for those potential producers and processors.
Angie, why is some of the residential area, why is that not covered? Isn't that residence, residential?
It should be, and I don't, that's a good question. Yeah, I would think, it might be actually residential multifamily. And we discussed, we discussed that specifically. Planning Commission is making a distinction between single-family and multifamily at this point in time.
Oh, you know what that is? That's leisure estates.
I was going to say, I think it's a retirement community, up in the retirement communities, leisure estates.
So they should, they can?
They could sell it down.
They can sell it down.
Well, if they had a, so this also does show your commercial zones. So you do see that they have CCA, that potentially could be a location.
Exactly.
Angie, now, how does this relate to medical marijuana in society? I mean, our moratorium didn't specify whether it was medical or potential.
At this point, our moratorium did say both medical and recreational. Right now, we are only considering recreational because right after the Liquor Control Board made their rules for recreational marijuana, they then worked together with the Department of Health and another, a third group, and developed recommendations for rules regarding medical marijuana. Trying to, recreational marijuana is anticipated to be highly regulated with Liquor Control Board oversight and a very strict environment. Medical marijuana has basically had absolutely no oversight and no regulation. And so they're trying to bring them back into the fold and somehow make it a more regulated environment. One of their recommendations is that they do not allow collective gardens anymore, which is what you see now. And that they basically force people to go buy medical marijuana at the marijuana retailers. And so they would have two different grades. One of the big issues with that is that medical folks don't pay tax on their medical marijuana, and so they don't want to pay that 25% tax, and so how do you reconcile that? But they made these recommendations to our legislature. They're going to require legislative changes. And part of that also has evolved into changes regarding the tax structure so that jurisdictions can start recouping some of the, you've expressed concerns about we're giving all of the policing on this and not getting any of the tax money back. And so it's trying to address some of those shortcomings of the law also. I think there's three iterations now of this, and nothing's been moved forward with yet. So at this point, we're not making any recommendations regarding medical marijuana with Renton because we don't know what the rules that we have to play by are going to be. And so we're, if nothing changes between now and the end of our moratorium, I think we'll probably send a moratorium on medical marijuana, is what I would anticipate.
That's where the real danger lies with the feds, by coming down on us on medical marijuana. Because as we all know, the system's being used. You get a prescription, there was the one impasse thing with the two doctors or like a thousand prescriptions and an $8 period. They managed to get their license to practice as pending for it, and still. They're pretty easy to come by, and there's no control. If you read the definition of a collective garden and see what people are really doing, it's a farce. It's an absolute farce. And so until they bring that back in, I think it threatens the whole system.
So one of the other things that's on this map that Planning Commission expressed an interest in, at least seeing what it would look like and what that might mean to the city, is a thousand-foot buffer from chemical dependency centers. And so on this map, if you see little dots with perfect circles around them, those are the locations of state-registered chemical dependency centers. And so that also has a pretty dramatic impact on, if we were to include that as a requirement, on where places could be located. I don't have a sense that that actually would be something that will move forward as far as chemical dependency centers. You can see, it really takes out a lot of the Grady, Rainier Avenue corridor. And so if we were to do something around residential, it would sort of push it into that corridor. And then if we further constrained it with a chemical dependency center, it really leaves very, very few places. So I don't anticipate that moving forward, but just to let you know what information they asked for and things that they considered, this was part of it. The final map that you have is sort of a potential compromise on their desire, the Planning Commission's desire to do something to protect residential. And just to touch on it, their concerns as far as residential goes, some of the things that they've mentioned is that they, it makes them very nervous. This is a land use, in particular with marijuana, medical, or with recreational marijuana retailers we don't have any experience with, absolutely none at all. And so we can only try to anticipate what the impacts, what those negative impacts will be. And so with that, we're going to, they want to be a little more restrictive to start with.
Can we talk about the hours as part of that?
Yeah, so the State Liquor Control Board has said that marijuana retail, they've dictated their hours, and they are allowed to operate from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 a.m. And so Planning Commission kind of feels like, geez, if somebody's living next door to a marijuana retailer, what if they like to go to bed at 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night? And potentially, they're, so that's one of their concerns, is that their people might hang out in the parking lot. And sure, there's a loitering law, but at a certain point, you know, that might be a part of it, and so.
No loitering law.
Oh, no, okay. So additional reason to be concerned with that. Also concerned about the frequency of traffic. They don't know, we don't know how many people are going to come and go. A higher volume in taverns, people tend to go to taverns and stay at taverns for a while. But retail is going to be a little more like actual retail, people kind of coming in and leaving. So it might have a higher volume. There's only going to be three of them in the city. So it's probably reasonable to assume there's going to be a fairly high traffic volume, but we really don't know. And then they also were concerned, sort of a continuation with a concern about kids. What if there's a kid that lives in the house that's right next door to the marijuana retailer? And that doesn't seem like, that seems like maybe that's something that we want to protect the kids from. So sort of a compromise is to say that marijuana retailers could not be located to a parcel that abuts residential zoning. And in this map, things have changed on you yet again. We changed the color just so that you could see it all. It's a lot of information, the colors kind of stopped working. So the peachy color is the residential buffer. Now, the Liquor Control Board buffers changed to sort of a darker orange color, a darker peach. And then the zoning, we don't make a distinction between the different zones. They all are just now hash marks. And so, for instance, on the Sunset, to go back to Sunset, you can see that CA zone. The peach encumbers a fair amount of the CA zone, but there are still a few places where potentially in the CA zone on the Sunset corridor, a marijuana retailer could be located. So that seems to potentially be a little bit more appealing because it's not channeling it all into the Grady or Rainier Avenue corridor or our employment area valley. It allows opportunities for it to be more equally dispersed throughout the city, but yet still is somewhat protective in, with our single-family neighborhoods. We really don't know for sure where they're going to land. I think Planning Commission, there are definitely divergent opinions. Some folks are perfectly comfortable with, "Let's just zone it and apply the Liquor Control Board buffers and let it be." Other folks really want to be protective of our single-family neighborhoods and are more concerned about those potential impacts of folks that would have to be right next door to it. We do have definitely zones that, as you can see, are residential that abuts our commercial designations. And so there is, that potential is there, potentially. We really honestly don't know. Chief Molisevich attended one of the Planning Commission meetings, the second one. Some definite questions came out of that, and the chief was able to come and talk and address those concerns and questions. And it was really great to have him there. And I think that it definitely put their mind both at ease as well as sort of helped solidify some of their feelings and opinions about some of their perceptions of things with potential policing issues and such. So we'll find out for sure next Wednesday what their recommendation to you all.
I think one of those marijuana, so it's just that one, could you drive that rolling hills in there?
There's a white spot right in that yard.
Why your bird feeder?
I think I'll start a review.
We could fly it in and fly it out. Sorry.
No, it's all right, that's all I have.
Yeah, I just have a question, and I'll go back to medical marijuana, because I got a call in tonight from a lady in the Highlands that said that they she can count five medical marijuana stores that have opened up in the last month or so, so.
I've seen a couple of them.
I guess.
Well, and I think you were saying that they've applied for licenses that represent what they're really doing, right?
I mean, one of them, it applied for pain cleaning.
From what?
Pain cleaning.
I'm aware that it's a problem, and I know that our chip can certainly talk about it more than I can, but I know our code enforcement team is working really hard. And when they see them, they're going out and doing their best. But when they apply for a business license, if they're honest, they're being denied. If they're not forthcoming with what they're, some of them have said they're management companies, and they just help other people start these businesses in other jurisdictions. Another gentleman did open one, and he was told that he can't do that in the city of Renton. He then changed everything to be more like a tobacco store and marijuana paratonalia. And he's hoping to open a marijuana 502, which is the recreational retail store if he can get that license. And the way that we choose to regulate it would accommodate him. him.
It's like they're all lying to us.
Yeah.
Angie, have we, have we done any kind of uh, analysis of uh, what kind of revenue this could generate for us?
So, the state just issued some numbers that they anticipated, I think it was 54 million in the first bi-ame and then it more than doubles for the second.
What does that mean to the city?
It depends, nothing yet. They have to change the law for the city to get anything.
There's some legislation that's pending that would give us uh, a small piece of that, but as you're watching the legislative, legislative session go along, they're probably not going to get to those bills in charge.
Yeah, I was just going to say that is one of our legislative priorities to ask for a percentage of um, the set aside that they have, most of the marijuana revenue is going towards education, but there's a certain amount that's been set aside as discretionary. And part of our request is to allocate that to the cities, just the way that they have initially allocated the liquor uh, excise taxes. Um, and just a few days ago, uh, the mayor actually signed a letter along with other mayors to, you know, once again make a case to say that the cities need to have this funding because, you know, at the end of the day, we're responsible for the enforcement and the action at the local level. Um, but um, so far we haven't seen the traction for this the way we would like to.
Right, it becomes an unfunded mandate, you know, we're going to have the impact of uh, you know, enforcement, but yet we're not getting any revenues. You know, the other thing too, that I think is interesting was that, you know, uh, I appreciate all of the thoughtfulness that we're taking and I expected this, that we're doing a lot of uh, you know, taking a lot of thought consideration about planning commission and the, the government and everyone else, the police department and how we're thinking about implementing this, but I just take the sense that it's just a little bit too much, you know, because I don't, you know, when you think about alcohol and you know, how we came out of prohibition, you know, how we treat alcohol. For example, you know, you can get alcohol, you know, at any liquor store, any grocery store, liquor store. And many of these grocery stores stay open 24 hours now, you know? And you go to places like what, Winko, uh, QOC, some of these places are open at all night and you can buy alcohol throughout the night? No?
No, you can't buy al- alcohol at 2:00 or 3:00.
After 2:00.
It's 2:00 to 6:00.
Okay, so 2:00 AM, but the, the state's got the uh, 8:00 to 12:00 AM midnight kind of a name. So, you know, I, I, I think that, you know, we're just, over the years, we're just going to find out that we're making a big deal about not all that, because right now, there's a lot of people that are using it, buying it, nobody's getting any money taxes for it, you know, a lot of wrong people are getting rich and wealthy on it. And uh, and, and we're not hearing about, you know, uh, people getting uh, into major car accidents and killing people from being over intoxicated with marijuana and not at the same, you know, main not life without alcohol, so I mean.
I don't know if anyone saw the news report last time on Colorado, but they were saying that um, it has sales afar exceeded what they anticipated. And within a year, they, it could be a $1 billion business in the state of Colorado.
Do they have the same like tax?
No, the tax structure is significantly different.
And they have a system for local allocation that unfortunately ours does not have.
So the more difficult we make this, and we do, you know, I mean, we could be, you know, well, it's a moot issue right now because we're not getting revenue anyway. But if we were getting a piece of revenue, you know, it could be in our best interest to, you know, try to simplify this thing, you know, to some degree and make it work for us.
There's a heck of a policy issue, should we just identify? And if we overtax it, what's going to happen is a larger, still a large percentage of the sales can be on the black market, which will encourage all the criminal industry that we, as a state bought, as an example, what we were trying to prohibit by going to recreational marijuana. And so, we don't know where the tipping point is, but they tax 75, or 25% on top of 25% on top of 25%. And I don't know that there was any sort of, of business analysis done on where the tipping point is. So it'll be very interesting. I think, I think it could be a bit more expensive on the, on the legal market than it could be on the black market, people will still go buy because it's, it's legal.
Right.
But if it's too much more, they're still going to go to their trusted source and we will accomplish very low.
If I could just respond, um, a couple of things. One of the things I didn't know until recently is when you see the green cross outside a building, they're, they're selling marijuana there, so that's it. And that was something I learned. Um, one of the things that Angie had said before with the um, with the planning commission was that um, they seem to realize that the one that's solid red where there's no place to cite is probably not where we want to go because the public voted it in. So we need to be reasonable and we, and, and not try to like ban it. But obviously consider the impacts to some of the residents and stuff. So, um, I would expect that they will be coming back with something that's um, moderate, you know, as far as location.
You know, and I don't think, I've just talked from the city step, but we're not trying to overregulate this. We're, we're not the ones that are saying you can only have three stores, free retail, that's the state liquor board that has done that. Uh, but obviously when you only have three stores, you definitely want to be sure that it's not in, those three stores aren't in an area where there's a lot of traffic. I mean, you want it in an area where there is a lot of traffic, so you, so the people who want to sleep at night and do all the other stuff, don't, don't get the traffic. So, you know, uh, so all we're basically doing is saying, where can you have, if you have three stores, you can have three stores. Then the other, other thing is, is on the processing and the uh, the growing in the processing, that obviously is a big concern anyway to me because you, where, first of all, where you, the odor and the odor control and all the stuff that goes with this stuff is, is a problem. So obviously you want it in a, in an area where the noise from all that, all that machinery and, and all the stuff that goes on isn't affecting it. And the state, we're not telling, we're not telling the growers and the processors that you're going to have so many cameras, where you have to have this security. I mean, and I think you'll find out from the chief that the security is, is an issue with this because you start looking around the, the county, you know, how many shootings we've had lately, which are quote, home invasion type robberies, and they all seem to deal around with somebody growing marijuana or selling marijuana. So there is, there is reasons to keep it out of, out of residential. And, and I don't think anybody, our staff, uh, you know, definitely not the council, but we went to this moratorium, it was, let's get us hands on this. So, we are going to, the people voted for it, we're going to, we're going to do what they said. But like any, anything when it comes to zoning and you want to know what's going on and, you know, this is definitely going to be something that people don't want in their neighborhood. Sister Rachel Roll, I'm not supporting birds, but that's a.
As you keep reiterating that we get three stores, isn't that about how many liquor stores we got here?
We had two.
Two. So I mean, it's kind of comparable. And we're not with a number of growers.
So they just recently changed that, actually. Uh, they had so many applications for growing that they then turned around and said, before they had said we won't have a limit, um, but they limited to three per person or three per entity depending on, so three per applicant essentially, um, licenses to grow.
So you mean three different locations?
Potentially, yeah. They limited the canopy of grow, of marijuana grow to 2 million square feet of marijuana grow. And so they had, I don't, it was like 8,000 applicants, 6,000, some crazy numbers. It's just not reasonable that you could have, if each person was, or entity was only growing a thousand square feet, then it's just not, you know, it's not reasonable. So they chose to say you can only have three. So that's just recently changed.
Are these, are these growers, you can't do both, you can't do the growing and you can't do the reselling.
Correct.
Okay, so these growers, you know, I got three locations where I'm growing my marijuana. When I grow it, I take it and I sell it to a retailer.
You grow, then you sell to a processor?
I sell it to a processor, okay. And then the processor sells it to a retailer?
Yep.
Okay, we have three different licenses here.
Yep.
We got a grower, we got a processor and we got a retailer.
Correct.
And is there any kind of, I mean, who sets the terms of, you know, what is bought and sold for?
In terms of pricing?
Yeah, between the processor and the retailer.
Market. The state doesn't, doesn't list the price. Um, you go back to where, you know, this time last year when we talked a little bit about marijuana, some of my concerns was in the law, they changed what the definition of marijuana was from the, the actual plant name to any, any substance that contained, I believe it's 2% of THC by content. And so, you know, there's a lot in this law, we just don't know as far as enforcing. One of the biggest issues I talked about last year was public use because in the past, if someone used marijuana, they'd arrested for the misdemeanor, our evidence techs were trained how to identify the plant under a microscope, put a certain dye on it, if it reacted a certain color, they could testify in court that it's marijuana for a misdemeanor. So now in this new law, they changed that definition. Marijuana is no longer the plant name, marijuana is that 2% of THC by content. So that requires, if we see someone using it in public, it's now an infraction. Um, but for us to, to charge that person, we would have to send that drug to a lab to be analyzed by a chemist to see whether or not it contains the 2% by THC. And there's, there's no time anywhere for the lab to do that. And so, public use is not enforceable. Um, and one of the biggest issues is, is how we compare Colorado with Washington. Uh, the tax structure is different. If you look at this, this handout, you know, Colorado's tax is, is a 5% excise tax on American marijuana, there's some local fees, uh, they're subject to retail, local sales tax and excise tax. We're taxing it 25% every step of the way, except now, this is last year, they changed it where you can be both a producer and a uh, a processor, not taxing. You know, my concern I brought forth last year was, I mean, we'll see what happens in Colorado, I don't think we're going to see the revenue the state will be receiving because of all the requirements. Chip could grow in his garage and, and not have to pay 25% to, to grow it, 25% to process it, 25% to retail it and have it um, processed, basically using barcode from seeds to the final product and then have it in a special room under a video camera for 30 days or something like that before it can go out for retail or something weird like that. And then, um, he can just sell it to his already customers. Um, I mean, I'll be curious to see how it all works. Um, you know, Colorado, I was watching, I think it was NBC last night, there were interviews of people in Colorado because originally there was a huge glut, but now you're starting seeing people interviewing Colorado with bananas around their face saying, I can grow it cheap with a Colorado can. Um, and I think that's, we just have to wait and see what happens. I mean, I was, I was wrong on the public use. I thought there'd be much more public use this last year than, than what we've seen. Um, we get a lot of complaints, uh, you know, probably less than maybe 50 this last year for public use. Basically, you know, you're in your backyard having a barbecue with your kids and the neighbor next door is, is smoking on his deck and you don't want to smell it while you're cooking, well, there's, there's nothing we can do about that. You know, there's nothing we can do about in a farmer complex. The farmer complexes can, can rule what they want to as far as, you know, smoking. Um, you know, thank God we don't see a rampant use in our parks. We have some complaints in our parks, but we don't see a rampant use. Um, I mean, there's a lot of issues, you know, and this whole thing of, of the different form, you know, the medicals, you know, you go from edibles to liquid form, um, you know, and my, my issue is, you know, the transportation, you know, of, I don't even figure out how they're going to transport it. You know, if you're, if you're growing, you know, 10,000 square feet of plants and you process, you save 50 pounds, how is that going to the marketplace? You just build your back of your van and drive it down to the retail store?
Well, there's some really stringent regulations on that too. You gotta have like a, a safe attached to the, the back of your van that you have to put it in. And I mean, they're really, they're crazy regulations. You expect this to be like a heist movie or something like that.
So it sounds like that we, we really, you know, haven't quite figured out how to do this in a, you know.
Well, it's, it's up to the state, the state says overruled.
The state.
And I think one of the issues you're going to see, just like there was an article, I think it was um, you know, outside the Redmond area, not incorporated King County, where they identified a, a commercial office building that was going to be a site of a processors and the neighbors went wild. It's kind of the dude NIMBY, you know, not my backyard. You know, yes, I'll vote, yes for marijuana, but just don't have anyone in my neighborhood grow to process or sell. That's where the complaints are going to come in.
There's a real argument that the growing and processing will eventually shift to the east side of the mountains because it's going to be so more, much more expensive to get enclosed space in this part of the state because you're not going to be able, we don't have as much sunlight as the eastern part of the state, so it's all going to shift to the eastern part of the state to be grown. And you can't go outdoors now. So the market's going to quickly show us some things. But if they shift most of the processing, uh, grow, excuse me, the, the producing and processing to the east side of the state, then maybe we'll have the heist convoy of panel trucks with safes and armed guards, everything else coming across the house. It'll look like the, like the Yakima firing range coming back.
I mean, Grant, Grant County is, is getting a lot of gruel because that's where they're stalling all the server forms for major internet companies because electricity's cheap. So if you're growing marijuana, you're going to find the cheapest electricity, so you'll probably see that.
Is Colorado the best model of, you know, in terms of policy, you know, in terms of marijuana?
There's only two ones, Washington and Colorado.
Yes, the only one.
And each of them were kind of creating it on their own and both of them were based on initiatives. It's not like, you know, any kind of regulation went into it at the beginning, it was all initiative based. So I mean, there's, there's a lot we don't know. I mean, you know, any officer will say when, when we had just two stores for alcohol, you know, up at 12th and Sunset and then down at 3rd, 2nd and Williams, you always found kids hanging out outside, you know, trying to get someone to, you know, buy them something as they walk in. Kids aren't going to have a place to smoke it, so there's the potential they're going to be using more on the altar once it comes to retail. Um, I mean, I don't know. I, it might be a novelty for the first, and I'm just guessing, it might be a novelty to have all the retail stores at first, but we'll see where the cost comes in because that's, that's a fact. Because if you can get it cheaper, depending on the enforcement, you know, in my own personal opinion, if Chip, Chip gets arrested with some marijuana that doesn't have an official state tag, you know, I'm not in charge of, of revenue please. I mean, really, that's not my role. Um, and it's just, it's really going to be just muddled, how this thing rolls out. It's just, it's just, it's difficult to really enforce.
And the other, there's a, you know, something that currency investigation council, it sounds a little off worded it is, but uh, it's with the state crime lab. And the state crime lab is, they've just basically said they ain't doing marijuana testing. I mean, that is, and it even, even, and the state legislature's starting to straighten the law a little bit because the way it was written, the, originally what even the THC thing was so complicated that they couldn't test it with the, the equipment that they had because of the way it was, because it had to be, you had to heat it to get the process, to get their, that test. If you heated it, you destroyed the evidence, so they didn't have any evidence left. So they've changed that, they've got that changed, but uh, you know, they've just said they're not going to do marijuana unless it's, it's something, a major, major case. But where they're getting uh, really caught up is in blood tests for DWI. They are saying, they are saying that the person that who uses medical marijuana, if they get in their car anytime, it's going to be over, over the limit.
You know, one of the.
If, if they get stopped and they get tested, they're going to be over the, the, whatever the limit is.
Well, there's so many forms though, you know, there's creams that you rub in and there's, you know, gels that you squeeze in your mouth and, I, you know, there's going to be, there's so many forms. It's going to be testing, body testing, I think.
Well, as long as, as long as.
Other than a blood test.
Absorbent, that's, I mean, that's the only way.
Yeah.
We, we have arrested people this past year for DUI, who's been, their influence of marijuana, um, you know.
From a blood test?
Right. Typically, if, you know, it requires, an average officer is probably 50/50, where you have to probably bring in what we call a drug recognition expert. We have a handful of, of DREs over at department that, for training. But it basically requires a blood test because, you know, you can, you'll see the driving, do the field sobrieties, um, and if they could fill all that and they have no alcohol in their system, and so then it's, it goes through the court system.
So how do you get the blood tests from them? You have to bring them in and take them to the hospital or something like that?
Right, you have to, you have to transport them and I think, you know, warrant.
You gotta get a search warrant.
You have to write a search warrant to get the blood.
To get the blood.
Unless it's an accident. Unless it's an accident or something like that.
So it's a big deal.
It's time to sue, yeah.
Well, it's a pain in the ass.
Yeah.
I mean, if I'm a police officer, and I get some guy, and I'm pretty sure he's high on marijuana, and he hasn't hurt anybody, and I can get rid of him, I'm gonna get rid of him. Because by the time you, you gotta sit, you gotta arrest him, you do all the tests, then you take him to the jail, then you gotta worry about at three o'clock in the morning finding a judge.
Yeah.
Which they're trying to streamline that process. You got a three o'clock in the morning, you get a search warrant, then you finally get the search warrant. Well, nice part about this is with SCOR now, you know, we have medical people there to draw blood, and they're, but then that causes SCOR another whole issue. I mean, there's so many issues to it, I'm saying.
Do they have someone there?
I got a question now about, you know, our policy as a city in terms of, you know, employees and drug testing. We don't do drug testing, right?
We don't. We don't do random drug testing of employees, but we do random drug testing of employees who are required to have a commercial driver's license.
Okay, so how are we gonna view someone who gets, you know, medical marijuana, okay, for pain or whatever the reason, or someone who gets, you know, what we call that indirect contact, you know, your own.
Secondary smoke.
Secondary smoke. How are we gonna deal with that? Do we have policy in place to address that, or are we talking about it?
We are talking about it. We've talked about it with our attorney. The thing with the CDL is that that is a federal law, and marijuana is still illegal under federal law. So our employees are still subject to no smoking marijuana if you're going to have a CDL.
Medical marijuana?
No.
Any of them?
No. No marijuana whatsoever.
So you've got a medical requirement for it. You can't have a CDL.
You would not be issued a CDL by the Department of Licensing.
And the police department already put the word out, zero tolerance, medical or not. If you got it, you'll go through the discipline process.
If you're in an accident, I think you don't do a blood test.
That comes under the, if you have the CDL, those are the people.
But not the other, okay, but not any other accidents.
Not in the others.
So we don't have any policy in place where a scenario could develop where an employee who is not, you know, required of CDL gets a drug test, I mean, like, and they're diagnosed or they're found to have, be positively, you know, having had marijuana. We don't do that with the new hires?
We do not drug test new hires, except for what we do in police and fire, the normal physical that they go through.
Yeah, we have language in our collective bargaining agreement that, that under certain circumstances allows us to take people in for drug testing, that it has to be physical signs that's spelled out in the contract.
We have policy citywide. You can't come to work under the influence.
We have a policy, statewide policy.
For whatever reason, alcohol, drugs, marijuana, whatever, if you're under the influence of your work, you're violating city policy, and you'll be disciplined for it.
So if a police officer, you know, happens to have a, go get one of those random drug tests, and he or she.
They wouldn't be subject to random drug testing.
Okay, so where would that happen at?
You'd have to, you'd have to catch them probably on duty where you see signs and observations that you feel they are under the influence. Then, there's language that gives us the right, but then, that can be appealed to the.